We have, uh, we have six P M. This meeting will now come to order. Please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Alright, so just, uh, yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, Lisa and Cynthia, one of you guys are gonna have to go to mute, uh, cuz you're, we're picking up feedback. So whoever, Cynthia or somebody, here you go. Not both of y'all. Not both of y'all, but one of y'all needs to be in mute only.
I hope they're not driving.
No, they're not. They gotta drive.
Are you passengers?
Alright, so, council, though, as you could see, Councilwoman Taylor and Councilwoman Thompson are on special assignment. They're doing something for me in McAllen, so, uh, that's why they're not here. So with that said, let's get going. Alright, uh, I don't know, oh, I'm sorry, uh, three legislative player, uh, please, uh, Councilwoman Wade.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for this time together, Lord. I just ask for strength and courage, and I ask you for wisdom and guidance in all of the decisions we make tonight, Lord. I just thank you for patience. I thank you for calmness. And just thank you that, uh, we're open for new ideas and that, uh, and that we will, uh, we will do the best that we can for, uh, the city that we represent. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, item number four, public comments. Do we have anything, Sylvia?
Yes, Mayor, this evening we have Mr. Sally Smith regarding feral pets.
Robbie.
My neighbor's with Garcia's are raising feral cats and my front foliage is the maternity ward. Um, this is their second batch. The first batch was three cats. That was a hundred years ago. And my pit bull resented them grating up and down our front porch and she put her head through the window. So that was one window I had to replace. With these cats, there's five of them. And the same dog resented them being there and she put her head through another window. So now that's two windows I have had to replace and I have told Mr. Garcia. And his response was, oh, no. Now, I have taken out about eighty percent of all the foliage in front of my house. Because there's five cats over there, plus the one that they have. There are no medicines, no shots, no nada. And they are going to reproduce and reproduce again. I do not, I cannot tolerate this anymore. I've had it. My dogs have to be unleashes. I want to show you what happened yesterday. My dog was unleashed and I, in my dark, and I was trying to turn my water faucet on. I'm seventy-five and I don't do movements. I tried to turn my water faucet off. A cat came out and threw, my dog took off. She had a shock collar on, but her shocker went. And I couldn't. I landed on a tree stump. I landed here. You probably can't see my face that well. Okay, now. My dogs all have to be unleashes. We need to do something about the cat problem in Palm Valley. I would like to move. I literally would like to get out of here and not have to put up with my neighbor's cats. I would like to enclose the front of my house so I can have that, but I can't afford it. I would like to quit, um, here. Okay.
Go ahead. Keep, keep on going.
I would like to be able to put barbed wire fence, barbed wire around the back of my fence that I put in to keep my dogs in. Because the cats jumped my fence, jumped the six-foot fence and come in. Okay. I, I like cats. Trust me. I don't have anything against cats. I am tired of my dogs constantly barking and I'm tired of the cats sitting in my pots and my plants. And I'm tired of them in my garden making pyramids. I just don't, I don't know what to do. I'm at my wit's end and I am asking. I'm asking for some, some kind of resolution or help. And it's the first time I've ever asked for help since two thousand and twelve when I moved in here. Now. I, 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 I don't know what you can, he can do. I don't know what you can do. I don't know what I think he can do. But it's just, it's gotta be. Neighbors across the street, you know how many cats they got in their house? Ten. They took in ten kittens. Neutered, bathed, clawed, plus they're taking care of another six. So we have more cats than.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I know, I know I can't, uh, respond. But Sylvia, would you please send me her name and address? I'm really hard to hear. But I wanna, um, go out to the address and, and take a look at it. And I apologize, but my death. And fortunately, I'm hard to hearing for women in my life. That's what I've been told. The pitch.
Ah, anyhow, I, I loved, uh, I'd love to go out and, and take a look at it. Let's move on. Item number five, discussion, possible action to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Lisa Taylor?
George, I have some, uh, corrections.
Alright, please.
Okay, on page two, kind of in the middle of the page, the paragraph that starts with Mayor Ribetta, uh, commented if tabling the item, blah, blah, blah.
I approve it.
Yes. The second to last sentence, there should be a period after, after the words Upper Valley, period. And the rest of that sentence and neither one, blah, blah, should be deleted. And then continue the, the end of the paragraph with, there are still, still no known answers.
Okay.
Okay, and then, on page four, under item number ten, it says, Mayor Ribetta will remain as mayor of the city of Palm Valley. Um, it, it goes immediately to talking about the issue without starting out, explaining what we're talking about. To just start after the head with a sentence that says, Mayor Ribetta announced his intention of running for election as the state representative for District Thirty-seven, period. Then you continue with Mr. Mann, you know, blah, 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 and the case says that you're not prohibited from doing that.
Okay. Got that, Sylvia?
Okay. And those are the only corrections I have.
I move that we approve the minutes as red plus the correction said stated by Lisa Taylor.
I need a second. I have a second, all in favor? If Lisa Taylor is making the motion, I'm second. All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Alright, item number six, discussion and possible action to enter into a consulting agreement with Real Strategic Solutions to conduct a water and wastewater study. Ladies and gentlemen, we have David Garcia and Dan Seren are here with us to explain the scope of work. This came about after our workshop, uh, in, uh, in September. Uh, council, you guys asked me to look into, uh, an account, uh, a, a study of our, of our water and wastewater, uh, charges that we, that we have. I've always felt that we have an issue, uh, with our, with our water department. Uh, so this is, this is what we've come up with. Dan, as you know, you know, he does not need a special introduction from me. Uh, so I'll let him continue. Just press the, uh, you have the green button on?
I don't think.
Good to go. But, but for the record, please, uh, advise, uh.
Well, I'm Dan Seren, Mayor, and council members, appreciate the opportunity to be before you. I have a proposal that you have with me, uh, for crime.
David Garcia.
Getting invited, David Garcia, Real Strategic Solutions. Thank you for the opportunity.
And, uh, I have, I come with about thirty-one, just over thirty-one and a half years of experience in municipal government. All aspects of municipal government with the state of Martinville and David was with Cameron County as the county administrator for a point in time and assistant county administrator for many years. And so both of us together combined have over forty years of combined experience in government. And so we submitted a proposal for a water and wastewater rate, uh, rate study. And you, I think you have that in your packet. Uh, and so the process would be data collection. And the data collection is gonna be, uh, very contingent on information that we gather from your staff. Uh, the, the operational cost, the usage information. Uh, and from that, we'll also gather information on non-revenue water. The non-revenue water is that water loss that occurs every month. It happens in every city. The water you purchase, if not necessarily the water you sell to the customer, uh, that. Because the meters aren't legal property, there's a line break somewhere or there's some evaporation going on. But all that has to be taken into consideration as part of that collection.
And then we'll do a rate analysis and the rate analysis.
We'll take into account what neighboring communities are charging for water and wastewater. Uh, what the operational cost on the water and wastewater side is for the city of Palm Valley and how those two intersect. Uh, and then we will forecast that out in ten years. Uh, going out, uh, far enough into the future to take into account any capital improvements that the city of Palm Valley is considering in the future and how those costs will impact the rates.
And so all that is part of the, the process for us. Uh, and then we'll come back with not only what we propose, uh, with a rate, uh, uh, adjustment over a period of time. It probably won't be, uh, what we'll come back with, probably won't be a one-time adjustment and that'll be it. It'll probably be over a period of time. Uh, but we'll also forecast, uh, what the capital improvement program would be and what those costs should be and how they should be followed into the rate study, uh, or the rates, I should say. And so we will be working with staff. Uh, we look forward to working with staff and gathering the information and put it all together. And then we're doing a lot of research on our own, uh, from neighboring communities and also gathering the data that we need to compare the rates from neighboring communities and the city of Palm Valley. Be happy to answer any questions on our proposal. Uh, and we would be available to begin, uh, upon execution of the agreement uh, within forty-eight hours started. Counsel, uh, as you know, I, you know, we've, I, I always felt there's an issue there. And, and the biggest concern for me is projecting capital improvements. Look what happened to us. If we don't plan now, then we're gonna wind up where we're at now that we have to fix something and we don't have any money to do it. This is, this is the preparations that our council should have been doing fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years ago. Uh, and this is a start. So, uh, I, I recommend we, we hire this, this consulting firm highly, uh, only because there are some issues we need to fix them. You know, we need to have a plan in place for, uh, for now, but for the years to come. Any other questions? Sales the water, wholesale water to Palm Valley. I know that they're undergoing a rate setting and I suspect that their rates are gonna be adjusted as well. That's gonna also impact this community and neighboring communities. Yes, sir.
So, so you'll be recommend, recommending the rates that we charge, correct?
Recommending several options.
Okay. And then, and are, are you gonna give an analysis on what you think the capital improvements that we do need to make as well too there or we're not gonna go into great detail of that?
Capital improvement is something that's gonna have to come from your staff. Uh, I would hope that, uh, we have an idea. We talk to engineers and we have an idea of what capital improvements are needed. Drywall beds, uh, any type of improvement improvements to the equipment, capacitors, motors, what have you. And I would hope that the staff has a, a this or that. If not, there's something we can look into. But that would change the scope. That would require some of your.
Yeah, I would add that this would be a precursor to looking at what your future outlook is going to be as far as capital improvements are concerned. So you need to take into account what you're planning on, on doing as far as increasing or reducing the rates as news. Uh, paired with, you know, capital improvements, you know, next year.
I think it would be relatively simple to compare to other communities that are actually growing, right, in size and taking in and stuff.
Yeah, I think the challenge is gonna be as the water that you're buying goes up, how do you convey, how do you collect that back? On the, on the side of the cylinder. The water and wastewater department, uh, should be collecting enough to cover their operational costs, in my opinion.
And so that's something that we'll be looking at so that it doesn't.
Take away from general.
Fine. Councilwoman Taylor, Councilwoman Thompson, do you have any questions?
I'll, I'll do it. Start. Um, I don't have any questions per se, uh, Mr. Mayor. However, I, I do have, uh, my opinion that I think this is premature. Um, as Jerry pointed out, it's a fairly simple matter to compare water and wastewater rates of the surrounding communities with our community. That's, that's easy and that certainly doesn't cost fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and as far as making plans for the future, I, I agree with you that we certainly don't want Palm Valley to get in the position that we've been dealing with of nothing being taken care of for fifty years and all of a sudden we have all these things. However, I do believe that recently, within the last, uh, two and three years, we have bitten off a lot. We have, we have pursued a lot. We've got a lot of projects in the works. We are making a lot of improvements. Um, as far as what needs to be done to keep the water and wastewater system going, um, for the time being, until we get further along in the other projects and kind of can see an end to those. Uh, Chendo certainly knows what's going on and I think, uh, I just think that this is premature. And frankly, um, as a CPA, I don't like the idea of throwing fifteen thousand dollars of, of real money, uh, for a study. I just, I, I like to see actual, I, I would rather have Chendo say, we need, need to replace this pipe that's crumbled or, or this scrubber or whatever, and that's gonna cost X amount as opposed to paying fifteen thousand dollars for a study to tell us that we need to replace that pipe or that scrubber. That's, that's my opinion. So I'm, I, at this time, I would be against that. And I'm happy to talk to you, George, about, um, uh, who the, a very less cost, um, uh, expensive matter on how to actually get, get together the comparison of the, of the rates and how we can do that in, really, you know, cheaply in-house.
So, to, uh, Councilwoman Taylor, as, as you know, we just had this discussion in our budget workshop, uh, in September. And you saw that we were going to be barely breaking even at best. We, uh, we asked to raise the rates, but nobody knew exactly what the rates should be. Uh, we did not know how much to raise the rates for. We did not know how much to do the wastewater fees. Uh, and this is what this is all about. This has nothing to do with a boat broken pipe and replacing a pipe. That's something that you're absolutely right. That's something that Chendo does. This is something that we need to know what exactly is that water cost? Are we actually making enough money to, for the future, uh, as well as to pay the, the items that we need to do now? Right now, I don't believe we are. I have always said that for about three, four years now. Uh, I've always said that there's something wrong with our water department. And this is sort of the expertise that we need to find out exactly, one, how much money we're, how much water we're buying, how much water we're actually charging, how much we're wasting. Uh, and the wastewater fees, uh, is that enough to cover the cost of the, of the sewage plant and our personnel? That's the type of study that, uh, I thought that that's what the council wanted me to look for. And I found it, uh, and that's what we're presenting to, to the council at this time. Uh, the resolution. We probably will.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I'm just saying that we're trying to run before we walk. And I think, I think that to get to the first step on what are we paying and what, what are we paying and what are we getting in? I think that that, that can be done, uh, in a different manner internally, um, for a lot less cost. And I just think that we're, we're trying to run before we walk.
No, they're still running and walking. Thank you for your opinion. I, I thank you. That's, that's a good, that's a good comment. Anybody else?
Yes, uh, Mayor, I just would like to concur with what Ms. Taylor's mentioned. Uh, I do have concerns that we're going to pay fifteen thousand dollars for data collection. And according to the documents that you gave us, these gentlemen will be working with our staff anyway. So the staff is gonna be researching already and getting, collecting this data. So this is already, we're already using our hired staff to collect this information.
Are you suggesting that our staff is capable to find a, a rate for us and wastewater?
Uh, I, I, I think we should at least start with having them collect the data over time. And then, uh, once that data's compiled, then determine what our next steps are to do an analysis, to take a look. I mean, surely, I would think with, um, you know, the board, we could definitely take a look at that. And then based on what the water rates are at the time that it is going to be increased, if Portland increases their rate, we've already got that data that we've collected it. We've taken a look at it. What has happened over time within our city? How often have we raised the rates? And, um, how much have we collected over the years? And with what we've collected, has that been enough to support, you know, what we need to keep our water, um, plant running and whatnot? Or take a look at, okay, the rates are increasing. You know, I, I would just rather that before we even consider the rates, and I'm not saying we're gonna consider the rates right now, but that data, yes. I, I do believe, an answer to your question, that we have qualified individuals, hired individuals who can collect that data and amongst the council, maybe take a look at it and then make a decision based on what we, what our findings are.
Please, uh, please tell me who can do that for us right now, Councilwoman Thompson. Remember, you guys, tell me who can do that for us right now. In-house, remember. We had those discussions in Sep- in September. Uh, I haven't heard from any one of you guys to say, uh, I can do this, I can do that. There's nobody here in this office I could tell you right now, we're just capable of doing stuff and studying. Nobody. Oh, me? I don't have time. I'm sorry. I do not.
Well, there, there, there are accounting personnel that we can hire on a contract basis through various companies. For example, when I was a, a young CPA, I worked for Robert Happen Associates and I got put on assignment. And I certainly was capable. Um, and it's really, it's really just a matter of collecting data at this point. And as long as they are, are pointed in the right direction, then they can gather the data and make spreadsheets. And then the council can review them and then we'll know where to go from there. Uh, but I just, I think we need the data first before we plug fifteen thousand dollars into a project, which essentially, we don't even know if we need yet because we don't have the data.
Well, I could tell you that, uh, we're losing them. Okay, but I don't know where.
Do we just need, um, delay this for thirty days to get data?
With data?
Cause I'm, I don't understand who's gonna get data. Let me finish, Mayor. If, if we need to delay this for thirty days to get the data you want, I'm all for it. I mean, I'm all for what you're suggesting. But if it's a simple thirty-day delay to get data for us to make a decision, let's do that.
My point is, who is going to get, do this data? Who's going to gather this data? Our staff, our staff is not capable of doing, getting this data. I'm telling you right now.
No, I'm asking.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about Zoom.
Yeah, I'm, that's what I'm saying. Who's gonna get this data? Cause I'm, I'm prepared to back the ladies on Zoom if we can get the data and wait one month. If not, let's move forward.
Internally, our information's just one sprocket in that wheel. There's data that you're gonna get from other cities, whether they're neighboring cities or other cities of equal size, same situation that we're in. That's what needs to be all compiled and analyzed and then they're gonna make the recommendation. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we're gonna provide a comprehensive report.
Uh, Councilwomen?
Recommendation.
You know, getting information from other cities is a simple phone call.
Motion you want me to make, cause I'm prepared to back you, but we need to move on.
Yeah, most cities won't do it over a phone call. They're gonna ask for all kinds of public information requests because it's gonna include a lot of salaries, right? Am I correct? Yeah, salaries.
Michael, I have ways of persuading people to give me information I want.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
She's playing attorney.
She's playing attorney. I love you guys. I wanna back you and just let me know what you want me to make a motion for.
Well, here's, here's the deal, counsel. Uh, we have to move forward with this. We have to, in order for us to get a comprehensive idea of where our water department is, we need to do this. I don't have a clue of where our water department is financially. I don't have a clue. I can tell you right now, I can tell you right now, we are going to lose money in this fiscal year in our water department. I can tell you that right now. Okay? You saw the budget numbers. You saw the surplus. It's gonna be nine hundred dollars. That is it. We are going to lose money in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
But George's solution isn't throwing fifteen thousand dollars more down the drain with the study. I mean, it's, the, the solution is seeing what other cities charge and comparing it to what we charge and seeing if it's reasonable. That's step number one.
Counsel, counsel, when I asked you in September, when I asked you in September and I, and all of you guys were here, I said, what can, what, what do we charge per, per gallon? What do we charge? None of y'all gave, gave me an answer because you guys didn't know. We don't, I don't know what to charge. And quite frankly, by calling the meta, Combs, whoever the heck we're gonna call, I don't know. I don't understand how we could compare that cost with, with, with us. Cannot do it. So again, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have, I, I, I don't have another solution. So either we, either we do this or we're going to lose money in our water department here. We better put a plan together in place for the next five, ten years or else we're gonna be in deep trouble here shortly. I'm not saying that we're gonna raise the rates tomorrow. Well, I want these guys to provide us with an in-depth study and tell us where we are and then you guys make the decision of what you want to charge. And as we know, and that's what it's.
George, I'm sorry. I, 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 I don't disagree with you for the future, but right now, we are not over budget in the water department for this fiscal year, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Then I would, I would just like a little bit of time so that we can look into this matter more and see if there's a more cost-efficient method of getting the information we need and then presenting it to the council, uh, and seeing what, what, if anything, we need to do to, to do our, our planning for the future. That's all I'm saying.
Mayor, this is a gen item six, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, to enter an agreement for a consultation. Is that correct? I, I make a motion to enter an agreement for a consultation for a gen item six. And let's move on.
That's, uh, so, so we have a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All, all opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Motion carries, three votes yes, two votes no. Motion carries. Move on here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, uh, since we approved this, uh, this solution for a study, I wanna table item number seven. since we approved this, uh, this solution for a study, I wanna table item number seven. Part of the studies they're going to be doing for us is, is figuring out the fees. So, uh, I need a motion to table item number seven.
Make a motion to set aside.
So move, man. Alright, we have, uh, item is, uh, we have a second. I do have a second. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. I wanna do the same thing with item number nine. Uh, and that's to increase the activation fee for the new water service. Uh, also the same, same thing that the study will provide us with that fee. So I need a motion to table.
So make a motion to set aside.
Alright, I got a, got a first and second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number eight, uh, is the discussion, possible action to amend the ordinance uh to increase the fire service fee from a single-family resident, residential, multifamily and commercial accounts. As you know, that the fire department raised their fee to us. I propose ninety cents to the residential and a dollar to commercials. You have it on your package. Any, any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, you just, uh, I, I've been on this over and over and over, thinking, um, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And I think our last calendar year, we had zero calls, correct? And the year before, it was two or three, uh, maybe, it might have been four. Uh, three of them were smoke alarms, one actual fire. So in two years, we had, had one fire. And, and I get the whole, you know, unfortunately, it's based on the value of our homes, which are much nicer than primary and, you know, other cities and less chance of having a fire. But this is now gone up because of the home value?
That's correct. Okay.
I mean, we, we have to pay for it.
Yes.
Um, it's a great, yeah, Harlingen Fire Department is a great uh, fire department. And so, I.
This, this is just.
It's very frustrating for me to pay a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the city of Harlingen. And the only two times they've come out this year has been for our veterans' park. My, and I appreciate them coming out for it, but, uh, ouch, but I support.
As it stands right now, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand per hour.
Right, that's right. I support it. I'd be happy to make a motion to support it, Mayor.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed and sign? Motion carries. Alright, uh, you know, I just noticed that we have Quinton Anderson on, on, uh, on the Zoom call. Quinton, I'm sorry. Uh, let's, uh, let's get him, uh, it's on the consent agenda. It's item number fourteen A, and that's, uh, to enter, uh, entry engagement, uh, with CRI for our annual audit. Uh, any questions for Quinton while he's on, uh, while he's on the line? No questions for Quinton? Quinton, you wanna say a few words since you, since you're on?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to, to submit our, our engagement letter uh for your consideration on the, on the agenda. We, we, uh, included, uh, you know, our estimate of the cost of the engagement and the timing of the services and, and plan to work with, with your administration and, and with Mr. Vino and completing that audit in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Quinton. So if there's no questions for Quinton, uh, we'll, we'll vote on this, uh, on the consent agenda. Uh, we'll come back to it. But Quinton, if you don't wanna stay on the line, uh, I understand. So, um, thank you for joining. But if you're more than welcome to stay if you want.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next item is item number ten, and that's discussion, possible action, adopt an ordinance to renew uh another five-year term for the adoption of cities' water conserv, conservation drought and emergency contingency plan previously renewed on October eighteenth, twenty sixteen. This is a five-year, uh, water drought plan that we follow for, from the city of Harlingen. Uh, if they go on a drought plan, we have to go on a drought plan. Basically, that's what it is. Haven't had an issue with being on a drought plan, and I don't know how many years, and I don't think we will. But by law, we have to be on this, uh, we have to have a plan in place. Any discussions?
No, no changes whatsoever to this.
None, right, Chindal? Same one that we've been having for the last, um, ten years.
Basically, there's just different stages and.
We follow the same.
Yeah, this is what we enact when we get to here, you know, moderate and.
Correct. Well, we follow the same plan as, as Harlingen and the surrounding communities.
Uh, I, I make a, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, renew this ordinance.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion, possible action to adopt an ordinance establishing a place system for elected council members. Uh, Council, uh, this is came about when I visited Houston and talked to several cities. Even smaller cities in us has, have a place system. Uh, I thought this was a great idea for us to have. It would be a lot easier uh on Sylvia and the election, uh, committee voter, uh, vote, the count voters, uh, at the end of the night. Uh, as you can see, everyone has a place number, uh, if you approve. Uh, unfortunately, Eric, you are number five. Even Lisa Taylor is ahead of you.
I was supposed to be number one, Lisa.
Now, as if you saw your package, uh, I think, what was it? Uh,
What's that number again? This is number eleven.
Jack, your honor.
Uh, number eleven and, uh, uh, basically, it would have come down to Michael Galvano would be place one, Cynthia Thompson place two, Lisa Taylor place three, Jerry Wade place four, and Eric Hoff place five. And I don't know how that happened, but, uh, that happened. So anyway, Council, this is something that we could do as.
Is this my height?
My height.
Who's number one?
Okay, maybe not. I thought Lisa was number one.
But it's, uh, uh, after the workshop that I attended, this is a lot cleaner. It's a lot easier. Uh, people can, when they come and, and ask to run for council, uh, they will have to state that I wanna run for place one or place two. Uh, in this particular May, May election, they're following May, uh, so they'll have to say place, uh, place, because it's odd year, is three, four, and five. So, uh, so this is a good system. I think we should have done this a while back, but, uh, a lot, a lot easier and got better to count. Any discussions?
Sylvia, so make your job a lot easier?
I'm not quite sure.
I think it'll be less confusing for the voters.
The only thing that I would say is that you don't have to count. I mean, for instance, uh, Mr. Michael Galvano and Cynthia, they run and, uh, say Cynthia has a, has an opponent, but Michael doesn't. Well, right, it's, it's done. It's just whoever is running against her. But unless, let's basically, you'd still have to count all the votes, of course, but it's, it'll be a lot easier.
I have one quick question. Is this gonna make it easier for me to be beat?
Uh, yes, says the councilman. Yes, probably. I'd like to make a motion to to accept this. We have a gen item. We have a motion, but do we have other discussions?
I just, I was just kinda curious. So, uh, somebody said, decides they wanna run for office, and they can choose, well, which place they.
Which place, yes, they choose what place.
What odd year they can choose, four, five, three, four, or five.
Yes, correct. You can't beat the whip this long.
Yes, yes.
Yes, they'll have to come and do a specific number that they wanna run for.
I mean, ninety percent of, of the cities have this, right?
I mean, even, even smaller ones than ours.
Yeah.
You got a motion?
We have a motion. Have any other discussions, uh, Council, Councilwomen? Nope, no other discussions?
And they're getting closer and closer.
By the way.
Say it.
Uh, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number twelve is a discussion, possible action to approve a resolution to cast a vote for a representative to hold position. Nine on the Cameron Praiser District Board of Directors. And I think what happened here, Rick Morado is, is, does that, did not accept? Is that correct, Sylvia?
Yeah, he's on the ballot because he said that he no longer accepted. I think it was too late. So that's why he's on the ballot. But if he were to get elected, he will decline.
He did not accept. He does not want to be part of the appraisal board. And that's Sam Bonito, right?
The same ex-mayoral Sam Bonito. Yeah, I met him, by the way. So the, so the three choices, so we do have the three choices that we have, and Lisa, uh, this is the, and, and, uh, and Jason. Uh, okay, so Jorge, Jorge Ledesma is the mayor of Primera. And I, I don't know Alan Ozuna. I don't know Juan Rivera. Do, do any, Lisa, do you know him? I know Alan Ozuna.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, I, I've heard some positive things about Mr. Ozuna. Very ethical, very professional. Um, if it were to me, you know, just based on the reference that I did receive, I would cast my vote with him.
He has a very impressive resume, that's for sure. Sure. I don't know anything about Juan Rivera either. Jason, do you know him? Lisa, do you know? Juan Rivera?
I don't. I don't. He's down in Port Isabel. I don't know him.
So Cynthia Thompson seems to like, uh, Mr. Ozuna. Uh, I don't have any comments.
Mike is a resume for us from the standpoint of a lawyer and his experience dealing with cities and all that.
And he's in Harlingen.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, uh, his resume was very impressive to me as well.
I've worked with him in the past. He's a very sharp guy.
So you guys wanna nominate? Who do you wanna nominate?
Make a motion, we nominate, uh, Alan Ozuna.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Alan Ozuna for the second. I have, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, now item number thirteen is discussion only regarding brush debris pickup services in the city of Palm Valley. Uh, Eric, uh, wanted to have a discussion on this. So Eric?
First off, I, I just wanna make a brief comment on record from our veterans' park dedication. It was wonderful. It was awesome. And I believe it was a great addition to our beautiful city. Thank you, Mayor, and the Parks and Rec uh Committee for doing that.
Beautiful.
Sunny. Okay. Now, five, six years in city government as a very reluctant co, uh, commissioner and councilman. I've had a lot of a gen items that were garbage. But tonight, I actually have a gen item that's garbage.
So I'm gonna talk to you about garbage.
Let me tell you what I found, and I talked to all the, uh, council members before I did this. I got, you know, some, I don't wanna do this, I do wanna do this, but here's what we got. We, we have a, um, garbage service in Palm Valley that's a handful in South Texas called Rear and Load Service. And that's where guys jump out of the back of the truck and pick up the garbage. It's not done anymore, anymore. Okay? We have three contractors I, I contacted, or actually four as of today. Uh, Waste Management, which is our current contractor that we do not have a contract with, correct, Jason? Okay. Republic Waste Connections, such as a smaller company, just got a, just got premier, and Redfish. Palm Valley has, uh, as I said, Palm Valley is only a handful of South Texas city being picked up like we are. And, uh, with what's called a subscription collection account and waste management is eliminating that. They're the only company that does it, but within the next, they said two years, but way before that, maybe within a year, it's going away. So it's going to carts. And that's called a automated side load truck. Okay? So they put whoever, it doesn't have to be Waste Management, whoever is gonna provide seven hundred carts to our community. And instead of me piling in my garage and bags, the cart's gonna be there. I throw in the cart and I wheel it out. Yeah, and the consideration for the age of our folks. Uh, you know, I'm sensitive on, but there, it's pretty easy to wheel the cart out and wheel it back in. So carts are ninety-six gallons and provided free of charge. So every home would get it. And a second cart, if somebody thought ninety-six gallons, which is about this big, uh, I threw, uh, Gulf and Buddy a mine four foot, um, light out in it, and it was about that far. You know, I mean, they're huge, you know? I mean, they really are nice. Uh, I thought I was gonna have to break it, but anyhow, um, would cost about five dollars more. So if there was a household that didn't think ninety-six gallons was enough, they could get a second cart for five dollars more a month. Hundred percent participation in the community.
It's required a hundred percent?
Oh, no, it would be, it would be a franchise agreement. That's, um, I'm following up on that, but Michael told me he's got people putting their garbage in his garbage because he has service and they don't. And I went out to, um, trying to, oh, what, what's, uh, there, there's a multi-unit place, oh, Cariba. But I, I went out there today and took pictures of the carts. And the lady, uh, one of the managers came out and said, can I help you? I introduced myself, you know, and, um, it's, uh, at Los, I'm sorry, Los.
Encantadas.
Tadas, right? And, um, I said, I'm a city councilman, and we're looking, we're just discussing about garbage. Just, I'll tell you what my problem with garbage is. I'm like, okay? The people across the street come over and throw it in my dumpster, you know? And they're loading my dumpster up because they're too cheap to pay for it, you know? And, and that's two or three, four times I've heard that where, you know, people don't wanna pay the forty. I mean, I pay forty-five dollars a month for garbage quarterly, automatically. By the way, I had to call the company, tell me how much I'm paying because I didn't know. I mean, I set it up electronically. But we have about four hundred accounts. Uh, we have seven hundred Mass Menos residents, so there's three hundred residents that are sticking it in your yard or, you know? And we could significantly lower our costs, probably.
Per individual.
Sixty percent, you know, from forty-five dollars to around twenty dollars. But everyone would be required to pay the, the twenty dollars. So anyhow, the other information I had, um, there's no RFP required, correct, Jason?
Right.
Okay, um, so we can make a decision in Texas of any company what. Personally, I'd like it to go out to bid because I think that would be the best for our citizens, right? But, um, but we don't have, uh, we, we don't have to go out to forbid. Free of charge brush pickup with the three com, or I, I should say four now, for your. Free of brush pickup with all four companies in a one location, okay? I personally, this is a unique community. I mean, and, and special, and I don't, I wouldn't wanna see someone throw in brush out there two weeks before it needed to be picked up one day a month, you know? So there could be a dumpster located somewhere, probably City Hall, that our homeowners that cut everything could drop the brush off. Not the contractors, not the landscapers, but our homeowners. So if you, he works a lot on his own yard, I don't, but he could bring it there and drop it off and they would empty it. Franchise fee could be included, it could be included with the company, or it could be included with our invoice. Obviously, if, if we decide to go this route, we're gonna bill the homeowners for trash. And I know we're really short on line items, but we could do sewer, water, and trash altogether, and typically, it's about ten percent franchise fee. And there are costs involved in credit cards, so I give my debit card, we're paying three percent. So obviously, we gotta get that three percent back, so ten percent would be, uh, you know, that's just a typical thing.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? Since this line, since this line item on the agenda is just a discussion, and we have one more line item on the agenda that needs to be voted on, would, would you all mind forwarding to the consent agenda, uh, being approved? And then going back to the discussion, because Cynthia and I, we need to, we need to disconnect.
All right, um, I couldn't hear what you said. We're gonna, we're gonna table you for a second, we'll be right back.
Table me anytime you want.
There's no motion here, so let's go do consent agenda. Any questions on consent agenda, any discussions?
I move for approval of consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent. We have a second, all in favor?
Second.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, I, I assume you're approving, so, uh, okay, so Councilwoman Taylor, Councilwoman Thompson, thank you very much. Have a good evening, we'll talk soon. Uh, all right, so Eric.
Thank you, goodbye.
Um, typically, three to five years is the contract, they, we're looking at five years initially, because they're gonna provide seven hundred carts, um, uh, once a week pickup, which I don't think with seven hundred residences and twelve hundred, all right, se- seven hundred res, twelve hundred people living here would be any issue at all. Uh, when you go from a subscription collection account, which you, you, and you, and I paid for, there's a lot of fees, they're not included in that anymore, there's fuel fees and, you know, all kinds of things. So we're talking about forty-five dollars to maybe twenty, maybe under twenty, which would be, uh, terrific. The commercial bins will replace the condos and HCC picked up by a different truck. We could have it done on the same day.
If, if you got a water bill, you're gonna get a trash bill.
Correct, yes, that's what it, that's what, if, again, this is just discussion.
That's right, talking back to you guys. I've also talked to all four companies about recycling, and there's only one that's interested in it. It's called Redfish, they do, uh, LaFerry Recycling. It's a, uh, eight yard, uh, they have three eight yard units that are packed all the time. We, we could have one, it'd be here, they pick up once a week, hundred and fifty dollar. I mean, I think it's an important thing for our community to start thinking about. Um, it's, um, it's, uh, paper, cardboard, plastic, metal, and aluminum. No glass, no organic, uh, waste, which would be food, cyro, electronics, or battery. But I, I think it's something for us to consider, and I think our folks, actually, if we educated them, would, would be right on. Nothing part of the garbage pickup, but, um, but I, I, I believe, and I, I don't have a dog in the race. I've talked to all four companies. I believe that we could get better service with Sylvia calling the company with seven hundred accounts than me calling with one account, you know? And I haven't been very happy with Waste Management since I moved here, but I'm gonna count, you know? And if so, vehicles, I mean, it's a much more powerful phone call if there's repeated issues, uh, of problems, you know? And, and we're all excited to be part of it, and, uh, it's just time, it's time for us to grow up as a city with garbage, even though we may not want to, but within a year, we have to. And Councilman?
Are, are we anticipating voting maybe on next meeting on this?
I'm not sure.
Anticipating for your bids, or is that what, oh, oh?
Well, I.
Waste Management, uh, uh.
Again, we're probably, well, sir, if, if the consensus of the council, uh, this discussion only is to look into a, a different type of service and to include the entire city, then that's something I'll look for, but I will warn you. Now, we tried this once before. Uh, there's out of five hundred and something houses, remember, the, the multifamily have their own dumpsters, right? There's two, there's two multifamilies that have their own dumpsters, so there's about a hundred homes, I guess. So let's just say there's five, six hundred houses. Out of those six hundred houses, about two hundred will have accounts with Waste Management. Where the other four hundred houses are taking their trash, like Eric said, they're probably taking it to the dumpster at the, at the country club or here, back here.
Where they'll mayor go to them.
What the argument was back then, when I tried to do this, uh, was that they were taking it to their office.
Yeah.
They were taking it to their office, and, and, uh, so out of five hundred homes, about two hundred, maybe two fifty have accounts with Waste Management, maybe, okay? If we do this, uh, in order to get the discounts that, that Eric is talking about, and he's right, we could reduce every person, the two hundred and fifty customers that are paying right now, they could be reduced by by half, more than half, sixty percent, and, and Eric is correct.
Right.
Plus, we will have that monthly brush pickup that everybody is coming.
No, not monthly, uh, or quarterly, I don't, I don't know. And, and we could do a monthly brush pickup, but you gotta understand, people are gonna put, put that out on the fifteenth, and it's gonna sit out there till the first.
No, no, no.
So, and I just thought our community, that wouldn't be good, but we could have, uh, a dumpster here for brush pickup, and once it got full at City Hall, they would pull it and empty it, so Sylvia would call, and so if I was trimming my trees, which I don't, but I could bring it here and throw it in there. Now, if a landscaper's trimming your trees, they're responsible to take it. So I, I mean, we could do a monthly pickup, but it's gonna sit there for a day, for a week, or two weeks, so I, I just don't think that meets our community's stand from what I've learned about it. So let me ask the councilors, three of you guys here, which we have a, a majority, but is that something that you guys would wanna see a proposal to vote on later on?
I'm not saying we're gonna have a response, but the early part of next year. Do, do we have, like on things up, townhomes and condos and stuff like that that have their own dumpsters?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, is, I mean, they gotta be divvying up the costs there, so I'm just curious as to what they're paying.
They're.
It's included in the rate way. Pardon, it's included in the rate way, but.
Harlem Jim Country Club, uh, out, whatever. And, uh, it's, it's gonna pay less. Okay, just because of fees and, and, but it's gonna be an extru- it would have to be an exclusive agreement.
And there, that, that's.
Nobody else can go anywhere other than ABC Company.
You got it.
In Palm Valley, and.
So, so more than likely, tho- those, that the dumpsters would still be in place.
Oh, absolutely, actually, for those people.
It's actually ninety-six gallon.
It's that, no, it's actually picked up by a different vehicle.
Yes, yeah, yeah, for sure.
They're, they're, they're a, uh, eight yard, um, dumpster.
Yeah.
And our, ours are side load, you know, for our houses, but could be picked up on the same day, the same day by a different vehicle, so you either one or two, I mean, Harlem.
Once a week?
Once a week.
Once a week?
Once a week.
Okay.
Yeah. And if, for instance, Harlem Jim Country Club, once a week wasn't enough, they get two. If, if you're the household that you're, um, making so much garbage, Jerry.
Get another container.
You got a second container for five of us, you know? But with seven hundred residents and twelve hundred, uh, people, I mean, we just don't have.
You want me to look into this?
Uh, I'm, I'm just kinda curious, before we put a, a, an item on the agenda that we're actually gonna vote on, and, and, and we've got bids from different companies. I think one of those, the flyer's gotta be stuck in everybody's door, so that, you know what?
You wanna survey, you wanna survey done?
I think a survey would be very good.
Okay.
At the end of the day, there's the ones that are.
Well, it needs to be an intelligent survey, though.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to educate the people that were going from forty-five dollars a month to something way under.
You have to, here, here's, here's something that, I, and I hear you, and I agree with you. However, like I told you, out of five hundred, let's just say six hundred homes, a third of those are paying, two thirds are not, so the two thirds are gonna say, I don't wanna pay a dollar. Okay, I'm just telling you, that's, that's one of the, one of the problems that I had when I wanted to do this. I'm using, I'm using, so we have a long, long up, uphill battle, okay? I, I'll tell you that right now. Uh, but we'll, we'll, we could proceed.
We gather bids, doing a scope of work as far as the entire package, what exactly they're willing to provide service and cost.
The only thing I don't like about this is having that brush dumpster back here, that I don't like. Anywhere. Imagine them break coming across through a place with all that brush, they're gonna, they're gonna have brush all down the street and on the end.
No, no, we don't do brush, I mean.
So that, that, that I just don't like.
Uh, sure.
No, we don't do brush now, so I, I don't have a problem with it. By the way, I want to add one too. Uh, Redfish is, is willing to put an eight yard container here, and which is not a large container, hundred and fifty dollars a month for recycling, okay? Recycling is, um, they're picking up weekly, paper, cardboard, plastic bottles, metal, aluminum cans. So I just think that's a cool thing for our community to absorb and.
Well, that I can, that we could bring to the, to the council next, uh, next, uh, next meeting. That is very, that's very easy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just.
I have a question. Right now, right now, we're getting picked up twice a week.
Oh, correct.
In all of those programs, or once a week?
Once a week, yeah, and that's my suggestion. Yeah, ninety-six gallon, it's about this big, about that high.
So we're paying forty-something dollars a month for twice a week, and our cost is gonna go to half, but we're gonna get half the service.
Well, you're, you're actually, uh, I'm paying about forty-five dollars a month. And of course, no one will give the exact quote because of the RFP, or, or the, if we don't do requests or proposals, I mean, probably eighteen, twenty dollars a month.
But listen to what he's saying, Eric, listen to what he's saying, this, that, this is, that's the same argument. The same argument that, that came to, to this city council five years ago, the same argument. Wait a minute. Okay, so you're gonna cut the service and I'm gonna be paying the same thing?
No, I said, you're going from forty-five dollars a month to eighteen.
You didn't listen.
So half is twenty-two dollars a month, and we go in eighteen with brush pickup, so.
But the brush pickup is not at my house.
No.
The brush pickup is here.
Do you want?
Pickup trucks.
Do you want the brush pickup, do you want the brush pickup at your house? Do you want the brush pickup at your house?
It's, it's not mine.
No, I'm asking, because when I, when I went through it, that's a good survey question, and it took me a while, I mean, this has been six weeks, it took me a while. I'm like, do I want my neighbor to have brush out in their lawn for two and a half weeks, waiting for the first day of the month? Or the, let me tell you, for Saturday of the month, so when they, wh- when several of the companies said, we'll put a dumpster for your residence use only, I thought, man, what a winner, winner.
A lot of people don't have a vehicle, a pickup truck to bring it over.
Where's the brush going now, John?
Garbage. But, yeah.
They're throwing it in the streets and our staff's picking it up.
No. Same staff does not pick up my, when I trim my hedges, or when I cut my segos, and I bundle it up, and I lay it out there along with the trash can.
They pick it up?
They pick it up.
That's correct.
Well, Joe Jones, I, I was driving around today and taking pictures of, of the bins, uh, not the, not the carts, but the bins at the different large places, and Joe Jones, I drove by his house, and he had fifteen bags of, of, uh, his lawn, you know, he was doing something in his lawn. And I stopped and I got out and I said, Joe, are they gonna pick these up? And he said, I'll pick four up, we'll see, you know, you know, but, I mean, we need to grow up as a community. Nobody has We're in Service anymore, and it's gone, okay? So a- as much as anyone wants to keep it the same way it is, I don't have a dog in the race, I don't care.
It's gotta change.
Because by the end of the year, it's gonna be gone. Nobody's gonna do it, no one's gonna pick a bag up. Two guys jump out of a, out of a truck and pick their bag up and throw it in. My garbage man as a kid went in our backyard and picked the garbage up, you know, with a big can. It's gone, you know, I mean, so we have to grow up, we have to decide what we wanna do.
I hear you saying we gotta grow up, I'm representing people who have little cars, who have no way of paying for brush somewhere.
But then, you know what, then we have no brush pickup, that's fine. We don't have brush pickup now, what are you doing with your brush now?
Council, well, council, you're telling me that that is going away? That's, uh, that's, here, here's what I'm gonna do with this.
No, I mean, the brush can be put in the ninety-six gallon container.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's what I'm gonna do. The, the container's not gonna work, and, and, and the way that we do it at, at the island is you have three days before the first, put it out there. And that's it, if, if it's, if it's there before, you're gonna get fined. So that, that's exactly what will be here, that we're not gonna have a container, there's no way that our residents will be able to bring a question here if we do this, if we do this, guys. If we do this, so here's what we'll do, we'll work on it, on, on a possible, we'll work on a proposal, we'll pick the company. Or we'll bring companies there, council, you guys decide. However, I think you're absolutely right, or someone said, uh, a survey probably needs to be done. Uh, only because three fourths of the houses are going without accounts, those are the ones we're gonna sell. And you didn't listen to what John said. And, and that's the, that's the key, how do we explain going down to two to one? Yes, they're gonna pay less, and you're gonna, that's what we said, we're gonna pay less, you're gonna get better service, better, better, better container. You know, we have to sell it and then we look. You're right, that personalized service, you gotta know, I, I personally know the driver of waste management, he's gonna be with us probably in a year or two. And that's it, and that's when he's gone, guys, if you're absolutely right, Eric, it's gonna be that only deal, they're not gonna have a guy in that. So I, that is.
Absolutely right, so, and there's no way to do another agreement, uh, every, every resident decides what we want to do with their trash.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do orders for that, too, it's an uphill battle, I'll tell you that right now.
No, it's, it's, it's not, because if, in a year, it's gonna be over, that's, I mean, that's true. You know, that's true, so anyway. That's, that, that's exactly right.
This is gonna be.
This is gonna, yeah. Yes. Yeah, that's correct, that's exactly the way with the pressure. And the drive is wanna remind everyone, this is just, this is an item, was absolute garbage. That's, uh, that was a good, I'm gonna, I'm gonna click my.
It's a good discussion.
So.
Jose Corolla, real nice man.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what, he knew he'll come and ring my doorbell and say, somebody put some trashes in that here. And I go, oh, yeah, it's not mine.
That's right, he's been around a long time. All right, since the consent agenda has already been voted on and passed. By the way, uh, I, I can get, uh, help with RFPs from every company. They all said, we'd be happy to give you, or, you know, information, we're pressed for provisions for Jason.
It needs to be advertised, it has to be advertised, right?
We'll come back to the council and do that later on, but I think, I'll get with John, we'll just get. Yeah, we'll get some information from the residents. Uh, with that said, I had one. Consent agenda item, just wanna let you know, just came to our attention today. Tendo and I were driving around the city and saw Deeworth had some brush on, on the opposite side and, and the high grass. Uh, so we called our county counterparts and we said, hey, come clean up your mess. Come to find out that we own, uh, that side now. Uh, on Deeworth, on the other side of Deeworth, where the empty lot is, we, we own it. We have the responsibility of keeping it clean, keeping it mowed and the whole nine yards, I didn't know this. Apparently, we got this, the whole, the whole street, from the ditch all the way to Belino.
Can we sell it?
No, it hasn't.
It doesn't belong.
So, so we have the responsibility not to clean up on the, that other side, so Tendo's aware. Uh, sorry, guys, I missed this, this memo, apparently, I got this in twenty twenty-one, uh, this year in April. But this thing has been in effect since two thousand and nine, uh, and I didn't know that, so. Yes, that's correct, yeah, that's exactly what happened, that's exactly what happened, that's when, when they said, well, you, you want it, you get it. So we, we own the whole street and, and the other side, the little small east, but it's on this. We need to mow it, we need to make sure that it's all done, so, uh, Tendo's on it. And, uh, he's got that brand new diesel mower that, uh, he's gonna go put to the test to it, so it's all his. He's, he saw it, he's the one that, he's the one that gave me this information, he's saying, he got the root of Winging.
Now we can cite those homeowners when they put the pile of brush locking. Cause I see that all the time.
Chief, do you have anything, and, uh, you wanna add anything to the consent agenda, any, any comments, anything? Good, with all that said, then, it's, uh, your favorite time.
My favorite motion adjourned.
Uh, we have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.